Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 5th meeting of the Imperial Beach City Council. As a courtesy to others, please silence your cell phones. I've turned mine off during the meeting and engaged in conversations outside the chambers. And remember, we have a new technology system, which I know our acting city manager, Jacqueline Kelly, will make an announcement about. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yep, there you go.
First snafu right off the gate.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to first start off by saying it's a privilege and honor to serve as acting city manager while city manager Hall and deputy city manager Cortez are at the League of California Cities Conference for city managers. Secondly, for those of you here in the audience, those watching on television or via live streaming, the city just recently upgraded the council chambers with new technology. This is only our second meeting since the upgrade, and please bear with us. Staff, as well as the mayor and city council, are still learning to learn to use the system. So if there are any hiccups, please be patient. And this is the first time I've ever been in this seat and the first time that the deputy has been in my regular seat. So we apologize if there's any hiccups, but we'll get through this just fine. Lastly, if you are here to speak on an item on the agenda or under public comments, we have speaker slips in the back of the room. Tom Santos there is holding them up. Please fill one out, turn it in, and the mayor will call you up to the lectern when it's your turn to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now it's my pl-- oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Patton?
Here.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Councilmember Springs?
Here.
Mayor Protem Aguirre?
Here.
Mayor DeDina?
Present. And now I'd like to invite-- we have the pleasure of having Isaac Bautista from Nester Elementary, who is dressed like a young gentleman, very well dressed today to give our pleasure allegiance. And Isaac, I told you, my little brother went to Nester. So great to have a Nester student here. You appreciate it. Like I said, you and your family are welcome to the whole city council meeting. And now we have reports from council members. We're starting with councilmember Patton.
Yeah, thank you. I attended the state of the city last week, and we couldn't be doing any better. And a great job to the city staff and mayor. And I look forward to another year in the city of Imperial Beach, and it's a privilege to serve here. I also talked to Sweet Order Board member Paula Hall about the future of the pool while at the meeting. And we're currently setting up a meeting to get a little more information on the new pool, which is very important.
Mr. West, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It feels like I've been gone for a long time, and I know I've been-- everybody keeps telling me that I've been sick for a while, but I ha-- it was just a week. I'm good. I'm all good, but I'm glad to be back. And I'm gonna-- since I was gone so long, I'm actually just gonna cover the highlights so it-- so because the mayor wants to keep me under a minute. So on January 9th, I think it was really important the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority took our first step towards approving the Terminal 1 expansion and remodel. So this is a huge step. The EIR was passed unanimously by the board, and it has moved on to the Coastal Commission. That's a $3.1 billion expansion and renovation of our Terminal 1 to move it into the century because it was-- it's 50 years old. I just-- I'm happy that I get to celebrate a birthday with the Terminal 1 expansion. So and as on that same day, I was appointed to be the chair of the Capitol Improvement Program Oversight Committee, which means I'll be overseeing the Terminal 1 expansion. So very excited about that. And then on January 20th, really happy, great day in Imperial Beach when we had our fourth year of our Clean Cities Initiative, our first one of the-- on Martin Luther King. It was our first one of 2020. That day, we had an amazing day, and I was very happy to see our mayor jumping fences again, cleaning up, and holding the port accountable for making sure--
And climbing walls.
Yeah, climbing walls. I forgot. But it was a great way. We had the port come out, cleaned up Pond 20 and the area around that, and it was all because of the leadership of the mayor. I was really happy to see that. But we had over 319 people showed up. We removed over greater than 850 pounds of trash, over 150 pounds of recycling, a shopping cart, a stereo amp, in case you're missing it, and five batteries. And then what I'm really happy about is 600 cigarette butts were picked up by our volunteers. So it was a great day, starting off our Clean Cities Initiative on the right day, on the right way, on Martin Luther King Day. And then on January 23rd, I was up in Sacramento presenting. I was the-- at the Clean-- the Community Choice Energy Summit in Sacramento. I was a rep for the San Diego Community Power, was able to speak and tell them about our power plan. And I really think it's important that our board meeting, we actually talked about, we are really looking for people to get involved. So the San Diego Community Power is actually going out and we are gonna point two people from every city to be part of our community advisory committee. So this is our goal, to reach 100% renewable energy. So if you haven't had the time to look at this, I advise you to go to the San Diego Community Power website, which is SDCP. You can go on there. It's the first Google little pop-up. Come be a part of it. The committees will be made up of 10 members, two from each one of the cities. And I'm gonna leave this. This will give you a little bit. I'll leave this with our city clerk, so you can actually find out more information about it.
Maybe we could put it on the city's web-- new website and social media stuff.
I just got it today, so I'll bring it out as well. And then last but not least, upcoming events. February 13th, really excited. We're gonna have a bicycle mural day that we're gonna be going out and checking out. I don't know if you guys have seen our newest mural that's on our Cal American Water building. Really cool, done by world famous artist Carly Ely. She's gonna be on the wall that day, 1 o'clock in the afternoon on February 15th. You meet at Red House Kitchen. We're gonna ride all around, see all the murals, and then we're gonna end at Mike's for some refreshments. So please, everybody, come and show up. It's a great way to see all the murals and get in and to meet the artists and the muralists who Carly Ely is fantastic. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to comment on the state of the city. I think it was very well done and that we, I think, demonstrated once again that this city is doing well. We're not rich. We're not affluent like a lot of other communities, but we're making the most of what we have. And I commend my colleagues on the city council and the city staff for really having the vision to make the most of what we have and to make this a wonderful community. On the 24th, I was in Sacramento for the League of California Cities Housing, Community, and Economic Development Policy Committee. I'm a member of that committee. And, you know, the League of California Cities is the advocate for cities in the state of California vis-à-vis state efforts to essentially preempt local control and local prerogatives and the things that you all voted us as city council members, your local representatives, to do. And so I just wanted to take a minute and tell you what the league's strategic priorities are for 2020. And the league does the heavy lifting and lobbying in Sacramento across all kinds of legislative fronts, a watchdog on all the state legislation that can affect, impact cities. And they take carefully considered policy positions based on what nine different policy committees, including the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Policy Committee, going over this legislation recommends. And these policy committees are like 60 or 70 representatives from all the different cities in the state. So there's a broad representation. Anyway, at the league leaders' conference late last year, the following strategic priorities for 2020 were agreed to. And I won't go into the details of each, but just the headings. Number one, improve the supply and affordability of housing in the state. So while the league opposes some legislation that imposes unfunded mandates on cities, they really do support legislation that will expand the supply of housing, particularly by giving cities the funds and the authority to do something about it. Second is advocate for increased funding and resources to prevent homelessness and assist individuals experiencing homelessness. Again, another important priority. Third, address cities' fiscal feasibility to deliver essential services and meet pension obligations. Many states-- cities, unlike Imperial Beach, are in really bad shape in terms of meeting their pension obligations. We've taken steps, rather bold steps, to use our reserves to pay those obligations down, and it's one of the reasons we have a high bond rating, higher than almost every city in California. Fourth is strengthen community and disaster preparedness, public safety and resiliency. Obviously, the wildfire situation has done this, but also the coastal beach erosion and sea level rise issues are covered by this priority. And fifth and final, address public safety concerns of California cities. So that's a wide-ranging set of priorities, and the league lobbyists and staff are gonna give maximum attention to those priorities. Now, when it comes to housing, community, and economic development, the-- our first meeting was really to set the priorities within the league's priorities. And so obviously homelessness was a high one, but that's already a league priority. Housing supply, it's already a league priority. Redevelopment 2.0. The cities no longer have the financial and legal tools to address the housing supply issue and urban blight. And so there's an effort this year to really get that fixed with something akin to redevelopment authority. A fourth one, very important for us, is R H N A reform, R-H-N-A, regional housing--
Needs assessment.
Needs assessment. And where Imperial Beach and many other cities were allocated housing target numbers far in excess of the land resources and the economic resources that are available to develop that housing. So this is a priority for the league. And also, the league is gonna support ACA 1, which is a state ballot measure to lower the vote threshold for housing-related tax and bond measures from 66% or 2/3 to 55%. The people of the state of California will have the opportunity to vote on that. So, you know, one of the things that we did was we also took up the-- and I'm gonna close here in a second-- the really critical bill, Senate Bill 50, which, among other things, would have said, in your neighborhoods, our neighborhoods, single-family homes can be converted into fourplexes, not with any action or rights on the part of the city or the city council or our zoning or anything else to manage it. But that's just one of several draconian positions that were in-- draconian provisions that were in Senate Bill 50. We met on the 24th. We recommended it be opposed unless amended. It wasn't amended, and the league and other cities opposed it, and it was tabled, in other words, defeated, on the 30th of last month. So we're very happy about that. And finally, I've-- this year and next year, I'll be on the board of the league, and we're having our next meeting on the 20th and 21st of this month. And one of the major areas we're gonna devote time to is the housing crisis and what affirmative positions the league can take on that. And I'm one of-- I think one of the leading advocates for the league establishing a sort of philosophical strategy that's both environmentally and transportation-wise, state-of-the-art, and consistent with best practices. So this is, I hope, something that the league will move towards instead of just opposing each bill one at a time and fighting that kind of fight, but have a strategy in terms of the kinds of things that we're for, not just against. So that's my report. Thank you.
So very much for all your leadership of the league and councilmember McGarry or Mayor Protem McGarry, sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight. So on January 16th, I attended the MTS Board Meeting where I was named Vice Chair of the Public Security Committee. I was also appointed to the Ad Hoc Ballot Measure Committee, and I'm also the representative now to Sandag on behalf of MTS. And then January 28th, we attended, along with Mayor DeDina and City Manager Hall and Natural Resources Director Chris Helmer, we all attended the Minute 320 Working Group Meeting convened by the IBWC and CILA, where we had reports from the working group on the issues affecting the Tijuana River watershed vis-à-vis solid waste, water quality, and sediment. There was some good information shared there. But most importantly, that same evening, I attended a meeting in the evening with Commissioner Salmon. He's the director, the highest level of authority of the IBWC in Mexico. I wanted to pick his brain, if you will, on what-- how he sees this issue and what are the concrete next steps that Mexico is going to take to address some of the failing infrastructure. For those of you who don't know, since December's last rainfall event, we had at least nine pump stations that have failed and that are turned off, which is putting a significant amount of sewage into the system. And by system, I mean the river. The river is constantly now flowing at a rate of 18 to 25 million gallons of water per day because of effluent coming from the treatment plants on the eastern side of the city. So in addition to that, we now have just raw sewage going into the system. And we wanted to get a response of when we could expect these pump stations be repaired. And something that I found interesting was that he gave us a case of a similar situation that he experienced in Tamaulipas, which is on the other side of the border, on the eastern side. And if you don't know, the pump stations in Tijuana are managed by the state. So there's obviously a disconnect between the state and the federal government. They had a similar situation in Tamaulipas. So what he did was take over some of those pump stations so that he could have a lot more power, he says, so that he could, you know, operate and maintain those pump stations a lot better. So he is planning on doing so with the pump stations that I was just mentioning that have been failing because they can't just continue to wait for the state to step up and fix them and operate and maintain them correctly. So I thought that was positive. What is very, very concerning to us is that his timeline is fairly between four and six months. So what that tells us here is that we're gonna have another six months of continuous flow of 60 million gallons, if not more, per day fouling our beaches and, you know, impacting our quality of life. So and I'm sure Mayor DeDina will share a little bit more about what the plan is to ensure that that timeline is quite shortened because we don't have the luxury to wait six months. So that was that. And then on January 30th, I had the pleasure to attend the State of the City as well and emcee that event, which was really great. It was really great to hear that our city is doing so well, and I thank everybody who was there. And then January 31st, I joined the congressional delegation and Mayor DeDina and Supervisor Greg Cox for a press conference where there was an announcement of $300 million, 75 per year over the next three years, to address pollution related to the Tijuana River. I thought that was really positive. I think it's something that all of us, everybody in this room, we've all been working towards that for a very long time. So I had the honor to join them in making that announcement. We have to continue to fight for that funding, even though it's clearly spelled out in the language that that funding can go to different regions, could go to Region 6 or Region 9. So we will ensure that that funding comes to us because we have waited long enough. So rest assured that we will fight for that funding. And then finally, February 1st, which is a Saturday, we had our third MTS ballot measure workshop. I thought it was really great that we held it on Saturday, so we had a very strong attendance from the public. We had a lot of groups, you know, giving comment on the concerns about amenities, especially at trolley stations south of the 8, where-- and especially at Sunny Cedar, where the point of entry, there's not enough bathrooms, there's not enough shade. So that was really great to hear the public come and comment on that. Again, those of us who represent the South Bay are working to ensure that this ballot measure is shaped in a way that works for us all and not just, you know, certain regions in the city. But it's very positive. It's moving along, and please stay tuned because we are shaping that ballot measure so that when the time comes in November, people will know what is in it and, you know, what it will deliver to us. So, thank you. That's it.
Great, thanks. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank all the city staff, especially Sandra Cohen and Courtney Stevens for really, really doing a lot of the work on the state of the city. But it was all hands on deck for city staff, and I want to thank my council colleagues for being there and obviously all part of the great work that's been done and work that's planned. And I know our sheriffs are there as well, so thanks. And then I wanted to, yeah, just say it was a real pleasure to have everyone there and Red House Kitchen and Job Corps who helped sponsor it. So thanks again. Very exciting. And all our awardees, that was great as well. So really positive event. And last week, it's been this behind-the-scenes drama on two things. First, related to water quality. The fact that we were told that Texas was planning on stealing all the money that was allocated for the Tijuana River. And so we had to work behind the scenes with our colleagues to-- and to go-- that money would go to Region 6 to make sure that wouldn't happen. And this has been a big team effort, and I know that everyone from county supervisor Greg Cox and Mayor Richard Bailey, who was in Washington with Chad McIntyre of the EPA, was in charge of the EPA, I think Kevin Faulkner. So everybody was doing their job to make sure that's not happening. As my understanding, they were assured that that money would stay because USMCA language is in the bill. And Kevin Faulkner was-- Mayor Faulkner was in-- at the White House with the president to sign the final-- the formal signing of the USMCA. And I know he talked with the ambassador of Mexico there. So, you know, everyone's aware of what needs to be done. In the meantime, I think what we learned last week, and thanks to councilmember McGarry and our consultants, our lobbyists, Monarch Global Strategies, what they learned was there's 50 million gallons-- we knew there was 50 million gallons of water in the river, and we've been complaining about that for a while. I think Chris Helmer wrote the first email December 6th. We are following the crazy spikes in the river after it rained, and these pump stations failed. More emails went out, no response at all. It was another crisis from Mata de la Canyon, which is Smugus Gulch, that was averted. But in the meanwhile, the river kept flowing, even now that the rain stopped. And so we were in Tijuana last week for this IBWC CILA meeting, made it really clear this needed to be fixed. Our lobbyist, Monarch Global Strategies, met with Rego Veto Laborin, who had CES, the state agency that runs the sewage agency. And again, we're alarmed, and let-- and we met with them, and they said, yeah, well, Rego's saying that it's gonna take six to eight months to fix those pumps. And we said, well, that's unacceptable, right? If you dump 50 million gallons a day of sewage in the river in the United States, you'd go to jail. Our guys can't do that. They can't just have the sewer system collapse and then let it flow in a river. It doesn't-- they just can't do it. And so we used the opportunity-- I don't think anyone else really knew it was happening. And so it was unfortunate that we're announcing this money and really thanks to our congressional delegation and Kevin Faulkner and Supervisor Cox and others and councilmember McGarry and our entire team who's advocated for that. But at the same time, I was saying, hey, we got a crisis on our hands. Like, this is not going away, and these guys aren't planning on fixing it. I don't think really people-- it really hit. And then the weekend, I think we were-- those of us who are monitoring the river flow saw it spike to 60-something million gallons a day just on Sunday. And a gentleman from the community just sent us a tabulated data on river flow. It's actually worse than we thought it was. And so we started tweeting and contacting people and saying it was unacceptable. The feedback from EPA and US and IBWC was basically, there is no problem. Don't worry about it. It's really not that bad. The river's really not that full. And so anyway, you can imagine that didn't go over very well. And so we started making phone calls and talking to people. I know that Scott Peters staff, Congressman Peters staff, reached out to the EPA. And so Mr. Helmer, who's done a great job, and there's another letter going out that we're reaching out to people about, met with the EPA and IBWC folks. And I think you saw-- Rego called-- did Rego call you? So Rego called Chris to say that one pump station was already fixed, is that right? And that another one would be fixed, the pump station that takes water out of the river next week. So we went from six to eight months to it's already fixed. So, you know, the reality is, we're glad to do that, play that role, but the city of Imperial Beach shouldn't be the ones monitoring a federal river. Those are folks in federal agencies charged by the President of the United States, this including the International Boundary and Water Commission, have presidential authority to manage a binational river, international river. That's their job, and they're not doing their job. Nothing has changed since February 2017. It's very clear. They're not communicating with us. They finally, after Mr. Helmer had sent out a final email, and we raised all this ruckus, Jane Harkin, the commissioner of the IBWC, finally reached out to us today. And not-- it wasn't good enough, not pushing hard enough. So we're sending a very strong letter out to the EPA and IBWC to say the river needs-- the flow needs to be zero. That's what it should be. So and, you know, it's not appropriate for T1 to dump all its sewer in the river and then just have us accept it. The sewage levels off-- that are monitored by the county and the city of San Diego are off-the-charts bad. So it's absolutely unacceptable because people aren't doing their job. And that's what-- so we're gonna continue to force them to do that. And apparently, we were told that people are mad at me. They're mad, they're mad in Mexico, and whatever, so what? They're always mad. You know, people get madder at us for making noise about the problem than actually-- than about fixing the problem. The problem isn't our entire city council and city staff pushing as hard as we can to say that it's inappropriate to dump 50 million gallons of sewage on us every day. What we need to be mad about is the sewage and then move, take steps to actually stop it. So I also want to shout out to Mark Watten, who's the head of the Otay Water District, has a real direct line of communication with the governor of Baja, and then Rego Laborin had a long talk with him today. He's been a big help as well. And I told him he was gonna communicate with the governor of Baja. I said, let him know, we're here to help. If you have a crisis and a pump station breaks down, we'll send our guys in. We'll call Chris at-- I'll call him up at 12:00 at midnight. He'll-- he's glad to go down to Baja in the middle of the night. I'm sure Eric will as well, right, to help out? If it means that I'll be hassling them less later, but they have some peace and quiet later. But we're here to help. So if you have a problem, let us help you. Don't hide it. Don't pretend it's not happening, and don't lie to us. We can see the river for ourselves. So we posted video today on Twitter and Facebook, lots of photos, the river flow. I just posted the river flow data. So we're being very transparent, but we just want them to fix their stuff and stop making excuses of why. And the next effort really is to get that $300 million spent tomorrow. If they can build a border wall in a week, great, build the infrastructure to stop the sewage in a week. So that's where I am. But I want to thank all my colleagues in the city council. Chris is an unsung hero here. I know I drive him crazy because it's like he's always to clean up my mess and like go in and after I've yelled at everybody. But literally, besides him and Dave Gibson, I think Mayor Protem McGarry, there's probably a technical knowledge of both sides of the border that needs to be fixed. No one has that knowledge, like, especially our environmental director. So thanks, Chris. I appreciate that. So with that--
No, Mr. Mayor.
We have a nice presentation, consideration of proclamation for U.S. Naval Captain Sluntz on his upcoming retirement. And I know councilmember Mark West was-- liked to present that proclamation, and but today with Captain Sluntz, his wife Christina, and public affairs officer Kevin Dixon. Is Kevin here? There you go. Hey, thanks for coming. So you wanna start that?
I'd love to. Are we voting on a first or--
I'm sorry?
Should we so move that we are gonna--
Oh, that's right. We have to-- forgot about that. Yeah.
So I'd like to make-- Like to make a motion.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Great.
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
I like our new system.
Just so everybody knows, we have to vote on proclamations before we give them out, so.
You know, as we-- as somebody who's retired from the Navy, you know, this is an amazing time in your life, not only just for you, Tim, but also for Christina and your family. And I think it's, you know, I remember being a little nervous and excited and all those things. And I know you're waiting for your children to graduate from high school before you make your final move. And all I gotta say is Coronado's not a bad place to be, for sure. But we-- I know that the-- speaking for the entire council, you both have been wonderful ambassadors. you both have been wonderful ambassadors from the Navy to us. And, you know, I, I don't think a lot of people realize this, but when I talked to Tim back in the day about, "Hey, let's get some more sampling out there." And, and guess what? He, he, he kind of, he was doing that behind the scenes. So I, I really appreciate that. It was the first time that we really saw that the Navy was actually stepping up. So, thank you so much. But, you know, this isn't, we can talk about this all the time. And hopefully someday, you and I and Christina can sit down and have a beer and enjoy it. But, but this is really about your celebration because in many ways, this is about you and your family because you've both been on this journey together. And, but I'm going to read something that pretty much says what you've heard a million times. But, for the rest of us who don't know Captain Slence, this is a little bit about him. And I think I'm going to, this is the story of Captain Slence told through the proclamation of Imperial Beach. So, Captain Timothy Slence, native of Dayton, Ohio, the birthplace of aviation, and is a 1993 graduate of the University of Notre Dame. Not the boat school, that's, that's great, good job. He was designated a naval aviator in July 1996. And Captain Slence, believe it or not, was the E-2C, if you've never seen that plane, that is really the, what we call the, the Hawkeye. It's the eyes of the battle group. So, he was the Hawkeye Pilot of the Year in 2000 and 2003, and was, was honored by the Naval Air Forces, Navy Marine Corps Association Leadership Award in 2005 and 2011. So, 2003 must have been a light year for pilots. But Captain Slence was assumed command of Naval Base Coronado in August of 2018. I don't think everybody realizes how significant that base is. In fact, Naval Base Coronado is actually the geographically largest military installation in San Diego. It has eight different sites throughout our county. That's Naval Air Station North Island, the Naval Amphibious Base, Silver Strand Training Complex, Navy Outlying Field, right here in Imperial Beach, the San Clemente Island, which has amazing surf on it, remote training site Warner Springs, Camp Michael Mansour, and Camp Marana. So that's an amazing thing. And then, they are, Naval Base Coronado supports US Navy's mission and drives increased combat readiness, providing complimentary and effective infrastructure in the form of runways, piers, training ranges, and facilities to fleet operating forces while simultaneously delivering superlative quality of life and wellness service for our sailors and our families. And in fact, I know that there's a couple people in the room that I already know who use some of those facilities right here, in fact, most, most days. So it's, it's great for our community. Captain Slence has accumulated over 4,300 flight hours and 440 carrier-arrested landings. He's a recipient of Legion of Merit Defense Meritoria Service Medal, Meritoria Service Medal, Strike Flight Air Medal, Navy Accommodation Medal, and numerous unit combinations and wars. So your leadership in service as a commanding officer of Naval Base Coronado has not only been a beneficiary to Imperial Beach, but it's a beneficiary to all of our people, our communities. So, we really thank you for all that you've done. And the city of Imperial Beach really wants to say, "Fair winds, following seas." So now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor DeDina and the city of Imperial Beach, together with the rest of our city council, present this proclamation in honor of Captain Tim J. Slence, dated 5 of February. We got a little gift for you, too. We got a little gift for you, too. No, no, let's do it all. Let's get up here, come on. Everybody in? You want to say a few words?
Oh, sure.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Please say a few words. It's on.
Okay. Mark, thank you. All the council members, thank you so much. Mayor DeDina, I said a little bit last month, but truly, it has been an honor to serve in this role. It's unlike any job I've ever had in the Navy. And I had mentioned, you know, a kid from Dayton, Ohio with cornfields around his high school, you know, I never thought I would be in this area, you know, in, in this part of California, California at all, but in the best part. And learning about the community and doing what we can to help out and advocate where we can has really been special. And even though, you know, it's wonderful, all the military things that we do, what I've truly enjoyed most has been the relationships with the community. And sort of, you know, people talk about this divide between the military and the civilian world. And it may be sort of a hyped-up thing that's out there, but I think it's really been wonderful. And I hope that we've been open for you all and that we've learned from each other. And it's, it's truly been an honor. Thank you so much. Mayor DeDina, I mean, you are a hero to me for your advocacy for the environment and what you're doing. And keep it up. And now that I can use a different voice to help out, because I can't say some things in the Navy, but when I take the uniform off, you know, whatever I can do, you know, to help out. And I'll, I'll be complaining to the new commanding officer to get more involved in, in things like this. So, thank you so much. You're all doing a great, fantastic job, and it has been a true honor.
Great. We appreciate it. Do you want to, oh. Anybody want to make any comments or? Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure to work with you and, you know, a lot on your plate. You know, Nate, just the new Silver Strand complex, it's incredibly complicated. You know, I talked to you about, we, but one thing, it's also great is to talk about the Navy stewardship of the environment. And I know it, I've always said it drives you guys crazy, but it makes our life easier because it just means we have less things to, our residents to complain about, and more good things to talk to about the Navy, and more other things we can work on. And, you know, I think Silver Strand complex epitomizes that. You know, it's a big, big development project, but you guys did a great job of respecting all the natural resources there. It's pulled back over the dunes, you respected the Veronal Poles. There's still a lot of wildlife there. So, we really appreciate that. But the partnership with the Navy has been really inspiring to us, and more importantly, just really rewarding. And we're here to serve you and folks in the Navy, but we're very glad that you and your family will have new pastors. So thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items Number One through Four. Please vote.
Do we get a second?
Yeah. Yes, there's a second?
Yeah.
Did we get it? We, let's do that again. Who did, who did the first? Oh, Mr. Patton, and you did second? Oh. Great, okay.
Vice versa?
Okay. Okay. Good. Perfect. Thank you. I like this new system.
Motion carried unanimously.
For the public, it's much easier to use. So, very simple and, yeah.
The colors are good.
Well, good, good. Okay. We have, now we have item number one, ordinance introductions in first reading, public hearing to consider approval of resolution number 2020-5 to improve the integrated solid waste management refuse service rate by Edco Disposal Corporation that adds organic recycling and authorizes future inflationary adjustments to service rates through July 21st, 2024. An introduction of ordinance number 2020-1193, amending Chapter 8.36, refuse, solid waste, and recyclable collection of the Imperial Beach Municipal Code to require organics recycling. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Environmental Natural Resources Director Chris Helmer will give the report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm calling this Getting to Zero Waste. I think most of you guys are aware that it's a state goal to get to zero waste, and it's one of our policies in our climate action plans as well. But this item really has two parts we're looking at. First, it's a public hearing to consider modification of an Edco rate adjustment to include organic recycling. We're moving to a new organics waste recycling program. And then, the second part of this is actually an amendment of our municipal code. We have a solid waste section of 8.36 with some old language in there. So we're admitting that you actually add organic recycling into our code, into our city. And then, I also have Carl Shabam from Edco here, who's going to present and really get you guys excited about what organic waste recycling looks like in our region. So, tonight is the official public hearing to consider approval of resolution that authorizes a rate adjustment for Edco to implement a new rate structure for organic waste recycling. So this is a new program being offered by Edco. Essentially, what it means is, the residential rate and commercial rate will be adjusted to include organic waste recycling. They have them up here. The city has followed a 2018 rate hearing process. We mailed 45-day notices to residents. We posted a notice in the Eagle and Times. Your attachment three to your staff report is the rate notice that was sent out to our residents. We did not receive any written complaints to the city clerk as, as of this meeting. But really, in the simplest terms, we're talking about adjusting a new program for the rate structures. And then, since we're already talking about rates, we're including in this rate hearing an adjustment that includes annual inflationary adjustments according to Consumer Price Index to Edco rates. This is already agreed upon in our Edco agreement. So, this is just codifying it through city council. So why organic recycling? I guess, why not organic recycling? There's many jurisdictions in the state that have been doing this for over a decade. And really, because of the success of what these other cities have been doing, the state actually moved forward and has now mandated organic recycling as a responsibility for every jurisdiction. And over the last probably two to three years, the city's been working with Edco and with Cal Recycle, who is the state regulatory agency, to develop an organic recycling program that fits for our region. So it's not a one-size-fits-all for the state. Organics, it actually makes up one-third of the waste that we send to landfill. And the reason why that's a big deal is organics emit greenhouse gases on there. It's one of the goals to, to reduce greenhouse gases. It's one of the state goals to have, meet emission targets. And it's also a goal within our climate action plan to reduce our emissions. And the only way to do that is to get organics out of the waste stream and get it into a new, new system of recycling. So it helps the state and helps our jurisdiction meet our climate action plan goals. And then, it's not just an Imperial Beach issue. Every jurisdiction in the state is dealing with this issue right now. There's a recent article in League of California Cities, if you haven't seen it, that this is a top issue this month for League of California Cities, talking about how each jurisdiction is dealing with organic recycling. We are going to be the eighth city in San Diego County to adopt this. The other cities are moving forward right after us as well. So we're not the first, and we're not the last to be doing this. So with that, oh, and also, if you do approve this, then we'll be also having a subsequent ordinance resolution to amend our code. And we can answer questions about that again. But I really want to call Carl from Edco, and he's going to do his own presentation about what Edco is doing, how we're going to be meeting organic recycling programs in our region.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And Chris, thanks for queuing that. You did a great job of describing organics and some of the challenges in the state. And what I hope to accomplish tonight is to share with you what Edco has done to plan to help our cities meet and stay ahead of these state regulations, and briefly describe some of those regulations to you. And then we have a video that we'll show you, and then we can open it up for questions. So. All right. There's actually three bills that I want to talk about. The first one's AB 1826. And I'll roll through these, try and be brief in my description. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask. But the first one is AB 1826, which requires businesses to begin to recycle organics, to begin pulling an ad out of the waste stream. In the past, it'd be going into the trash dumpster. So we've been, and our reps have been out there working with the businesses already, reaching out to them, educating them, and rolling out green waste containers. The reason why that's important is, our approach to organics recycling as a whole, to include food waste, is a co-mingled approach, is for residents and businesses to be able to throw it right in their green waste container, not adding containers, and not adding trucks on the street. So, and then addition to that is AB 1594, which is also another measure to pull organics out of the landfill, which create methane into the atmosphere. In prior years, that was allowed to be alternative daily cover, as they cover up the trash each and every day. And January 2020, that's no longer allowed to be counted as diversion or alternative daily cover. Again, pulling more organics out of the landfill. And then SB 1383, I would say, that's kind of what I would say the landmark bill in terms of organics that has specific targets, one of which is 50% reduction of organics in the landfill by cities and municipalities by 2020. And what they'll do is they'll go back to 2014 levels, and they'll see where you're at, and they'll measure that in 2022. And they'll say between 14 and 20, have you reduced 50% of your organics out of the landfill? And then the other target is 75% by 2025. The difference with this bill, being that there's penalties behind it, potential penalties of $10,000 a day. So, then we would also work on edible food recovery and working with, to recover food before it's eaten, donating it to San Diego Food Bank, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's a requirement to, to recover 20% of that as well. So, with that. And years in the planning, as you see in this picture, is a state, there are anaerobic digestion facility, which we've been planning to build, and in the middle of building in Escondido right now. We have two permitted sites, the only two permitted sites in the region right now. One which we would start in Escondido, and as the tonnage and needs build, we would cite the second one here that's in, in South San Diego here. So, so with that, I think we'll move to the video here, which will probably do a much better job of describing this and kind of, you'll be able to see what this is all about. And then we can go into questions after that. And I'll rely on Chris's better abilities to fire that off.
Organic waste accounts for over 40% of the material in California's waste stream. Disposing organic waste in landfills is a big problem. And it's not just because of the resources we lose. In heaps of trash, organic waste decomposes and releases methane gas into our atmosphere. Organic waste is available in large quantities all over Southern California. Most of it is in the form of green waste from cities and local communities, garden and kitchen waste from homes, and food waste and scraps from industrial and commercial operations. Mandatory recycling of organic waste is the next step to achieving California's zero-waste goals. And Edco has a sustainable solution to help local jurisdictions comply. Edco is investing in a state-of-the-art, advanced-technology anaerobic digestion facility capable of powering our fleet of trucks with renewable natural gas. Edco's anaerobic digestion facility will be a foundation for cities to achieve state mandates, including AB 1826, AB 1594, and SB 1383, which are directly related to organic recycling in California. Anaerobic digestion, or AD, is the natural process in which microorganisms break down organic materials, such as food waste, green waste, fats, oils, and greases. Anaerobic digestion happens in closed spaces where there is no air. A fully automated cream system feeds the AD system, which means the facility can operate around the clock seven days a week. The core of the facility are the digesters, where microorganisms decompose the organic matter in the absence of oxygen. Over the course of approximately three weeks, with steady agitation and an operating temperature of 131 degrees, the biogas is released from the organic material and captured in the system. The material that is left after anaerobic digestion happens is called digestate. Digestate is a wet mixture that is separated into solid and liquid fractions. The solid digestate can be used directly in agriculture as a raw organic fertilizer or soil conditioner. Alternatively, it can be further processed into compost. The liquid digestate is also used as organic fertilizer. The raw gas from the digester is upgraded into renewable natural gas in a downstream system and can be fed into the gas grid, or further compressed to be used as fuel for our carbon-neutral fleet of trucks. Recycling organics will be easy and convenient with Edco's co-mingled organics recycling program. Edco is expanding our- ECO is expanding our source-separated green waste collection to include the recycling of food waste. The service will allow customers to toss food scraps in the same container as green waste. Simply put, if it grows, throw it in the green container. Residential kitchen caddies will be offered to allow customers to easily store and carry their organic waste from the kitchen to the green waste cart. These caddies are dishwasher-safe and are odor and bug resistant. The ECO anaerobic digestion facility will provide a sustainable end market for Southern California's organic waste, while at the same time producing organic fertilizer and a carbon-neutral fuel for the ECO fleet. Since 1967, family-owned and operated ECO has had a longstanding commitment to innovation and reducing impacts on the environment. ECO's state-of-the-art anaerobic digestion facility will begin serving customers in early 2021, assisting jurisdictions be in full compliance with state mandates and keep us on the road to zero waste. At ECO, we'll take care of it.
Great, thanks for that video. Do you have a more presentation? I think what we'll do is we have three members of the public, and then they can make comments, and then we can ask any questions we have. Is that okay? Great, thanks. Okay. So we have Ed Sorrels, our distinguished Marine Corps veteran. Ed Sorrels, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, sir. Let me get up here. My name is Ed Sorrels. I've lived here in Imperial Beach for 45 years. I love my little city. I want to live here as long as I can. But I sat down today with the letter that you all sent me and did some figures. And that $3.79 don't sound like much. That's just a little bit a month. But you run it out, and it turns out that it's $45.48 a month. And if you take that 45.58 and you run it out for the five years that you're proposing with this ordinance, the result is $579.72 of just extending that $3.79 out. Now, the gentleman here has showed us all of the good things that can happen, hopefully. But none of them are here yet, and I'm a long veteran of mechanical things. And I'll tell you this, none of them ever worked right the first time, ever. It just don't happen. And I kind of think that you're buying a pig in a poke if you buy this thing out for five years. We're set for a year, we have to do a year, but at the end of that year, let's put this thing up for bid and see what we can do with it. I really think that at $579 a month, I'm going to have to move or die. I don't know which comes first. But anyway, it's just too much, and it doesn't, you're buying a pig in a poke. There's six items there that have to interlock and do this and do that and do the other thing, and you have no assurances they're going to do it. And if they don't, that $3.79 could be $6 a month. So let's take another look at this thing before we buy into it. I really think that it needs to be looked at, it needs to be better vetted. The numbers just don't work out. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrels. We appreciate you coming and giving your feedback. Mr. Helmer, just for clarification, could you just run the numbers by us again, what the monthly and annual charges would be?
Yeah, residential, $3.79 a month would be added to your single-family residential rate. So I'll do that multiplication on here for you right now. So it's 227.40 a year. Or no.
Oh, no.
Over five years. I think you're trying to add up over five years. So over five years, it'll be 227.40 over five years.
Annually, what's the exact number?
Annually, annually, it's 45.48.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. We have Josie Yamada. You don't want to speak? Oh, I don't wish to speak, but don't oppose, but don't oppose the increase. Not says to speak, but don't oppose the increase. I can't read this. Maybe, can you read this? I'm sorry, I'm terrible at reading handwriting. Uh-oh, now I'm in trouble.
I don't wish to speak, but don't oppose to the increase. I oppose the increase.
Just come up and tell us.
The waste doesn't justify the increase.
We would have been done right now.
The reason I didn't really want to speak, but I'm going to tell you this. When I got my letter, I saw how every year it has increased for me to pay as a retired teacher and a set income. So I went back until 2014 of how much I'd pay, you know, on the thing. In 2014, I was only paying 83.43. Now, for my 2020, I'm going to be paying 93.87. So I do not believe that anything you should do over a period of time. I think that this is the year, you look at it and see if it works, and then I think you need to take another look at it. Because that's, to me, from last year was 87.87, and now this year I'm paying 93.87. That's six bucks. To me, it's a lot, because I'm sure a lot of seniors feel the same way. So I think, just look at it again next year. And if you have to do it, then take it out to bid.
Great, thank you. Scott Nemesis?
Hi, how you doing? My name's Scott Nemesis. I live at 518 Delaware. I'm against any increase on it, really. There's, I guess, a longstanding law that every residence has to have its own set of garbage cans. My residence is a duplex, and I live on a one-bedroom side, and I rent out the two-bedroom side on the other. And there's a total of three people living in this duplex, and I have to have six dumpsters there. So like, any increase is, I'm not in favor of. We don't even fill those dumpsters. I mean, three people, six dumpsters seems a little excessive to me. I've talked to ECO about it. They say, "It's the law. I have to have them." They're just sitting in the back, not even being used. I mean, three people can't even fill, you know, the three that I have up front a week. So those are my personal reasons. I mean, the video looks great, the idea looks cool, but I'm not a fan of it. I think I'm overpaying as it is. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much for your comments. Great, we have council questions or comments for our guest speaker? Go ahead, Mr. Spriggs. Sorry.
I had to figure out which button to push to ask to speak. Reading these to it. I guess my question is for our ECO colleagues, as well as the city staff. And obviously, this is a significant change for the public, both in terms of the amount of money and the new habits that will be required to separate our organics. How is the public going to be really informed and educated so that this culture change will, assuming this is approved, so that it actually works by people complying?
Okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, just used to that. Yeah, so there actually is a slide here, I think, on, yeah, on our public education. And I do appreciate the comments and concerns. There also is, for those that are financially challenged, a 20% discount. And if they have a larger-sized container, they can move down, and we can help them work with that, to be willing to talk to them about that.
That seems like something we have to do a better job. I know my dad had a smaller can, and he's really into it. So I think it's something we have to do a better job of educating our residents. In fact, I think maybe, in your case, maybe we could have, there would be three smaller cans, that it's actually a significant savings, so.
Yeah, it is. And the rate is 35.08, right, with the organics, which wouldn't start until January 2021. But if you move down to a 35-gallon cart, then you're 20% discount, and you'd be at 26.52 per month. And it's a three-month billing, so many of the residents are, when they see the bill, they're seeing three months. So I wanted to recognize that, and we can work with the residents on that, and that'll be part of the education plan. We have a robust education plan that we're going to roll out. As you can see, it's actually, commercially, we'll do site visits and meetings. We'll also be doing direct mail pieces in our Environmental Times newsletter, cart tags, and follow-up postcards to the residents and businesses. And then, our reps will be out in IB and communicating with the residents and commercial businesses to educate them and try and right-size them. And also, for the residents here, like I said, we do have that 20% discount, and we can help them right-size that to help them.
Just to elaborate on the 20% discount, what do people need to qualify for that? Because not everybody, I was, I'm assuming, I don't know. Could you elaborate on that? What is it required to qualify?
Yeah, I think that they're financially challenged, and I need to revisit that and see what the requirements on that are, but I could probably get, there's an age, and I think there may be an income piece in there, too. But we're, there's a lot of residents that take advantage of that, so. Like, it's more about maybe getting the word out a little bit more and educate them on that, working with them on that.
Mr. Patton.
Thank you. I always try to get some of my neighbors to come to meetings, and I told them about the trash, and nobody wanted to come. But they, you know, it just wasn't interesting to them. They were neither here nor there on it. Of course, nobody wants rates to go up. I just got a mailer from my gym, another six bucks a month. It seems like I'm always getting mailers. Something's going up. Everything's expensive. And I appreciate the people coming tonight to speak. But some of my neighbors pointed out a couple of things about ECO and about the hope, what they do for our community, the homefront cleanup. And maybe some of us have forgotten, it's like one of Imperial Beach's biggest things that happens. Everybody gets to clean up their yard and take it to Mar Vista High School and dump for free. And then, the scholarships that ECO does. ECO does a lot of scholarships for youth groups, sports, high schools. And I don't have the list, but I know they do scholarships. And they also give people opportunity to call ECO for two large items that get picked up twice a year. I know ECO just for their customer service. Recently, I was watching the news, and in another city, their trash cans kept getting broken, and it turned out it was the trash truck breaking the trash cans, but the city was still charging them. ECO, their customer service is what we want in Imperial Beach, believe me. The grass isn't greener on the other side. If we get another company in here, I think we'd get a lot more people in this room complaining. So talking to these people about ECO, to me, and what you're doing now with the recycling, it sounds like it's a really good thing. No, I don't like rate increases, but with what you're doing with this education and the foods and whatnot, and what you already do, I'm going to support this. And I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. West, do you have questions as well? Okay.
Yeah, I think those are great points there, Councilmember Patton. And I also think, you know, I want to thank you guys for being the donation on our gym, some of our murals around town. There are two businesses in our community that routinely step up to the plate and provide to our community, and that's really you and CalAmerican Water. And I applaud you guys, and it's always, I am very happy that I have had the opportunity to tour Ed's company, both facilities, in the Lemongrave and in Escondido. And I am always amazed at how much you guys are able to do, and I love that a lot of the things that you are doing to embrace sustainability. But I do have a couple of questions. First of all, you mentioned that the edible material is going to go into your green waste container. How are you going to, eventually, that's not going to work, right? Because you have to separate food waste at some point to where you can maybe give back some of that. I mean, like our San Diego Convention Center doesn't have a garbage disposal because they donate all of their food. How is that going to be attacked? And how is that going to be in the future? How are you going to manage that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll try not to bend over you. But yeah, that's a great question. So there actually is edible food recovery, which the state requires, or at least has a goal of the city's reaching that at 20%. And then, that's post-consumer, or pre-consumer, I'm sorry. And then, post-consumer, which is food scraps, will go in our container.
Gotcha. So you're going to have to, you're eventually going to have to have two different bins at your house, is what you're saying?
No, there's an opportunity for businesses, restaurants, and different venues to partner with, like, San Diego Food Alliance.
Okay.
To recover that food and to take it and use it to feed people, rather than it going through the process of anaerobic digestion. And we would rather have that be reused, beneficial reuse.
Because I mean, like, 50% of the food that is in a personal house is, a lot of times, should be reused in so many levels, right?
Absolutely, yeah. So those goals, which is 20% of that edible food recovery, and the rest, which are food scraps, which are post-consumer, have already been eaten, and they're food scraps, either at the resident or at the business, will go into our green waste cart, which then gets loaded in the truck and then goes to our anaerobic digestion facility.
Okay, and then, so.
There's two separate paths for that.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. And then, so you're, the facility that you're building right now, so it's going to power the trucks eventually with the renewable natural gas. Riverside just recently built an anaerobic facility that's actually going to be providing power to, it's a much larger facility than you have, but, you know, they're tapping into ability to actually provide clean renewable natural gas to the community. Is that something that ECO could possibly look at in the future? Because I know it's.
That's actually part of this project.
Okay, good.
We have entitlements with the gas company, and we have to, we're going to be injecting that gas into the pipeline, and that's part of the renewable natural gas that's in that pipeline, used for energy, and also will go into our trucks as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, we have to meet this requirement as we pull that head gas off the top of that anaerobic digester. We have to clean it or scrub it, and we have to meet a higher purity than what pipeline gas is called Rule 30.
Yeah.
And at a higher pressure. And so that'll be injected into the gas pipeline, be used for power and for renewable natural gas, which is piped into our trucks.
Perfect, perfect. And then, and that's going to be, the South County facility that you guys are looking at, will include that as well, right?
Right.
Because these are, these are super important, that we're, as we're moving forward on the San Diego Community Power, these are, these are things that we need to look forward to really keep local power being generated in our community. So that's great. And then, I think, I think it's really important that, I love your campaign to get discount, to make sure that our people in our community underserved really do have the discounts. But I would argue that, unfortunately, you really need to, you need to figure out a way, and I would recommend that you put that in your bills to make sure that if, you know, put this paperwork in the bill so we can really see it in getting out to the community. And then also, when you, you know, thank you very much every year for doing and supporting one of my Clean Cities Initiative, you know, the Red House Kitchen we do every year. And then, let's do, when we do that this year, let's make sure that we've got a booth that's set up, so people that are underserved in our community can immediately just walk up to that and say, "Hey, do I qualify for this?" And we can actually tell them right then and there, so it's a. So it's a, a port of it, and we can make it a, a great thing. And then, last but not least, could you tell me how, how, how important it is to capture methane before it gets into our atmosphere?
Absolutely. So, you know, that, those short-lived climate pollutants that the state is targeting, and we don't want those going in and depleting our atmosphere. And so when we capture that gas through the anaerobic digestion process versus it being in a landfill and that just going into the atmosphere, we didn't capture that, that gas and prevent it from being in the atmosphere.
Yeah, my question more is, how bad is methane as far as the atmosphere goes? As far as climate, I mean, yeah.
It's really bad. Ozone depleting.
It's probably the worst, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's, this is, this is, thank you for letting me lead you down that path. But, but yeah, that's, that's, this is, capturing methane is, is, is critical for all the climate goals that we're trying to do, because it is the, practically the worst gas out there. So, okay, well, I, I'm, I also want to ask, is there anybody from our Chamber of Commerce out here? So I, this is, this is an opportunity that I think our Chamber of Commerce really missed a grand opportunity, because if I am looking at this, $126.60 a month for our commercial, are, that is, that is a major concern of mine, I have to admit. So can, can, can businesses qualify for some of this rate reduction as well?
We'll take a look at that.
That'd be great, because I think, I think that, I think it is very important that some businesses in our community, if they have to suck that up, I know Red House Kitchen, if she's got to pay $126.60 a month, every month, that's going to, that's going to put her on the brink of, of having to give up. So I would, I would hope that if you haven't developed a, a plan for businesses that can show that they are, they are underserved as well, that we start doing it now. And, and thank, I hope that in the future, our Chamber of Commerce comes in and represents the business community at these events.
Yeah, we could right-size that, them on that as well, right-size their service, and also look at the pre-consumer portion of it, too.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember, Mayor Procham, I agree.
Thank you. I just want to echo some of my colleagues' comments about your service to our community. I mean, I've, I, you've been so embedded in this community, and I know you're very supportive of a lot of cleanup efforts. When I used to work for an organization that did cleanups, you guys supported us for over 10 years, removing over, I don't know, I think it was 400,000 pounds of trash out of the Tiwaneri Valley, preventing that from entering the ocean, so thank you for that. I, I think that it's great that we're moving in this direction. It's, it's a state mandate, right? I mean, we cannot work around that, and I'm, I'm proud of our state for leading the charge against climate change and reducing methane and greenhouse gas emissions, especially when it comes to food waste. I, I had the opportunity to work in the Senate on a food waste bill, and you'd be surprised how much food is wasted just because it's aesthetically unpleasing, right? Just because a, an apple doesn't have a nice shape or color, it's tossed. And it's, it's counterproductive on a social level, because so many people are, are hungry or, or, you know, don't have enough food to eat. Because it's also bad for our environment, because it's producing all of this methane, and it's overburdening the system. So I, I really commend the, the efforts that you're putting forward today, and I want to make sure that we're sensitive to our communities, communities' members that are financially, you know, challenged. I want to make sure that we, like Councilmember West said, make that discount offer readily available. I was just on the website right now, and I couldn't find it. I, I would encourage you to make that very prominent and easily accessible for those of us in our community that cannot afford this small but significant increase for a lot of our, our members who are on fixed income or, you know, are financially challenged. So I, I would encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up here and presenting the information. Appreciate it. Got you. So, do you have more questions, or just?
Just a suggestion.
Okay, you can, you can sit down on this one.
Yep. And this is really to the acting city manager, and, and us as council members. I think we should invite Edco to be present when we have our city open house meetings, where community members come out, and any other activity where IB community members come out frequently so that they can enhance the public education aspects of this, answer questions about the charges and the discounts available and that sort of thing.
Second.
Are we doing?
No, I'm just saying.
Oh, okay, oh, you seconded, great. So, yeah, thanks, everybody. I, yeah, I definitely think we can do a better job of getting the information out to the public about the, the smaller containers, and, yeah, I do agree, it'd be, it should have been, would have been nice to have more representation from the business community here. I think that's important, and I think we need to do a lot more of that. I, I realize in our house, the kids are gone, so we're, we're, we're not even, I mean, we have one bag of trash, everything else is recyclable or they go in the green bin. And then, Mr. Helmer, I, now I'm feeling guilty about composting. Should I dump my stuff in the bin instead of composting? And, and efficiently, I'm a terrible composter, so.
Keep composting.
Oh, keep composting. Okay, we're good. All right, okay. All right, with that, so I, we definitely heard the community, and we want to do a lot more to promote having reduced rates and, and making sure people are taking advantage of those smaller cans, et cetera, especially our seniors. So with that, I'd like to, first of all, I have to close the public hearing, and I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-5, approving the integrated solid waste management service fee increase. That includes organic recycling, authorizing future inflationary adjustments to refuse service rates through July 2024, using the same methodology and formulas as allowed under the terms of the city's agreement with Edco. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say one thing. There were, the city received no written protest under the Prop 218 noticing procedures, just for the record.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Man, I really like this new system.
Motion carried unanimously.
And now the city clerk will read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Council for the City of Imperial Beach, California, amending Chapter 8.36, refuse solid waste and recyclable collection of the Imperial Beach Municipal Code to require organics recycling.
So now I'd like to entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance, Number 20, 20-1193, by title only, in way further reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 8.36 of the Imperial Beach Municipal Code regarding refuse solid waste and recyclable collection.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, with that, I'd like to adjourn the regular reading. Thank you very much.